... flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Swicker.
Here.
Ms. Breyer, here. Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Palmer, here. Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. Angie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here tonight to do a zoning public hearing in the matter of the Windstone 5 annexation. I've already been before you actually twice with this annexation, but when we do zoning for an annexation area, it requires two public hearings, so this is just a hearing on the zoning, nothing to do with the annexation. So this is just a slide about where we're at in the process for an annexation in regards to this annexation, and you can see we're here tonight for our second public hearing. It's already been to the boundary review board and gone through their review and their approval. They issued their closing letter for completed action on May 16th, 2012. As I stated, it requires the second public hearing, but it is ready for its final action of the adoption of the ordinances if you so move. And then the first, the first public hearing was held March 12th, 2012. So this is in the northeastern portion of the city limits. It's actually a portion of an unincorporated island located just immediately north of southeast Renton Issaquah Road. In 1996, we actually did do a pre-zoning of this area, and it was pre-zoned R-5, but we don't have that zone anymore available to us, and so effectively that pre-zone kind of went away, and so we're going through this process again. The existing conditions in the area is, it's a very small area, about 4.3 acres is all we're talking about here. It's single family and vacant land are the current uses. There's only four housing units there now, about 2.9 acres of vacant land, and you can see that in the slide on this aerial, all that vacant land. There's really no regulated slopes within the area, so that's not a condition that, something that we would need to be concerned with in terms of the zoning. There is a Class 4 waterway known as Green Stream that runs along, almost exactly along the eastern boundary of the annexation area, which is a consideration. King County has the area zoned R-4, so that allows four dwelling units per gross acre in the county. That's what their current zoning is. In Renton, we have it designated with our residential low-density comprehensive plan designation. That designation allows for three possible zones, one being at the lowest density that we have available to us, the resource conservation, which only allows one house per 10 acres; R-1, which allows one dwelling unit per acre; or our R-4 zone, which allows four dwelling units per acre. So to look at the other existing zoning in the surrounding area, you can see there in the green that the surrounding area mostly is north, it's south, and to the east is all R-4, and then further to the west, there's some R-8 zoning in proximity. So based on these existing conditions and what's in the area, staff is recommending that the area be zoned R-4, allowing four dwelling units per acre. That would be four net, four dwelling units per net acre, which is a little bit different than what they have in the county. So our final recommendation is that council approve first reading of the ordinance effectuating the annexation. That's one ordinance, and then a separate ordinance, a first reading regarding the R-4 density, or R-4 zone, consistent with our residential low-density designation. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions of Angie from council?
Yeah, when, if, if we put out the R-4 zoning on this property, nominally four dwelling units per acre, but is the, the setback for Greens Creek subtracted from that prior to...
Yeah, that's correct. I mentioned very loosely that we, Renton uses net density, and the county uses gross density, and that's one of the key differences, is that critical areas come out, and then the land that's left over is where that density is applied to. So yeah, we would set that buffer off of that stream, and then the remaining land is what then could be built on.
Yeah, so there, there may only be four, four units total, or something like that, after you take the separate...
Yeah, yeah, and they also are required to take out right-of-way, so the land that's left over is what could be built on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Angie, the, across the street from there is a development. I'm wondering, is that R-8?
I believe, so across Renton Issaquah Road.
Right.
So it's R, it's R-4, and then that white area that's just immediately below that actually is another unincorporated island, so...
Okay.
Further south is more R-4 zoning in that same area.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions of Angie? Madam Clerk, do you have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If anybody in the public would like to address the council on this topic?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move the public hearing be closed?
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Angie. I know we got some action later in the meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I may be doing this at the wrong time, if you may let me know. I move that we approve the first reading of the ordinance effectuating the Windstone 5 annexation, and approve the first reading of the ordinance, ordinance rezoning the Windstone 5 annexation to area R-4, consistent with residential low-density designation.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council approve the first reading of the ordinances for Windstone annexation. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Next is administrative report. Mr. Covington?
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to audience comment, we have several people who've signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. There's a timer next to the city clerk. First is Steve Holman.
Good evening. I'm Steve Holman. I reside in West Hill Bryn Mawr, unincorporated Seattle. I've come here tonight to address the council concerning the annexation that's being proposed. I know that the council of the whole just debated on whether or not to allow the vote to go forward here near, near term in November, or whether to delay it at all, and I guess that that took me a little by surprise. We were, I'm on the annexation committee, and I were thinking that that was going to go forward, and we were not going to have another delay. If we do, so be it, but I did want to make a couple of points tonight, thoughts that I had after sitting in on your council of the whole meeting. One would be that there is a lot of economic development potential up there, and I realize some of it's going to be down the road a ways, but there are a lot of homes on two- and three-acre parcels that, that could be rebuilt into affordable housing for Renton with good views of Mount Rainier and one thing or another. There are things up there that we're overlooking. It's a diamond in the rough. It's not all Bryn Mawr, it's not all Lake Ridge, I realize that, but it's a, it's a good neighborhood and good people, so when you get around to thinking about the costs, I have to side with King Parker. He kept looking at this and saying, "Well, heck, we don't have any parks up there that are maintained now, why do we have to maintain them?" I agree.
You do that, you do that very well.
Thank you. So, so...
If you do it again, I'm gonna have him come down and reflect you.
No, it's a whammer deal. But seriously, we, we have very few parks that need maintenance. We have, we have a county standard that's open swale, drainage ditches, we have very few sidewalks, we have relatively few streetlights and what have you. I think what the people up there really want and really need is decent police protection, decent fire protection. They probably have a lot better fire protection now than they have police, but I know you're agonizing over how to fit us into your city, and a lot of us own businesses in your fair city, pay taxes in your fair city, and work hard down here to promote Renton, so we'd like the opportunity to vote for council members and participate as full citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Diane Ferguson.
Hello, hi, I'm Diane Ferguson, and I'm a, I'm a resident of Tookwilla that works hard and plays hard, and have a business in the West Hill area. I really appreciate your thoughtful conversation. It was, I can tell that you have agonized over this for a period of time, and I think that we would actually like for you to move forward, though, on putting it on the ballot for, for it to go to a vote. And there's a couple reasons for that. One of it is just fatigue. People are, are tired because I know I got involved with this issue probably back in 2001, 2002, and I participated in all of the groups and helped gather the signatures, and sort of people are tired and they want an outcome. The other thing is, that doesn't factor into the conversation, is how much we already contribute to the city of Renton through our taxes, through our shopping, through our support of all of the other activities. And so I don't see it that the people of West Hill are asking for something and not already being a contributor, and that doesn't get talked about enough. I think we're really concerned about public safety, fire, and we need someone to help us jumpstart economic development on the hill, and I think that's what a city offers. Right now, we have no one that we can really go to in terms of the county to say, "Let's try to attract a big grocery store, let's do this, let's put a block grant in together" and come up with something very thoughtful. We are more than ready to engage with you and help you to figure out how the numbers can pan out, but we cannot do that if we do not have a date certain in terms of a vote. Lastly, I would be real concerned because there are other people already in line, the city of Auburn, Kent. All of those are already in line for those tax dollars, and, and I think in the uncertainty of the times, we don't really know if in the future that will be available to us, and so I think this is as good a time as any to let us go for it on the ballot, and then to, if, if it is affirmative, then we work with you very hard to figure out how we can work together to pan out those numbers. But I do think that we want to have a vote, and that I think it would be a disservice for all of the effort and the time to delay that vote anymore. So thank you very much for all of your thoughtful conversation about this issue.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl Sherman.
My name is Cheryl Shireman. I live at 451 Seneca Avenue Northwest in the city of Renton. I have lived there for approximately 28 years, and so I'm going to make my comments in, in three areas this evening. The first one is as a city resident. As a city resident, the West Hill area, the area that's off of Taylor, Seneca, Stevens, they identify, of course, with Renton, but they also identify with West Hill. And I so much appreciated, as a citizen, your thoughtful debate, your thoughtful conversation in the committee of the whole. I, I need to just clarify with, with Mr. Person, though. When we first moved to our address, we saw Renton police all the time. It might have had to do with the fact that Tim Schlitzer was in the neighborhood...
Maybe.
... and everybody was driving around. But since, since Tim passed, literally, I could probably count on one hand the times in a year that I've seen a Renton police officer. So that, that just goes to kind of point out that in the city services, even the area of Renton that is at the base of the West Hill, isn't really receiving the equality of service. I, I, as a resident, have probably called the street department five times for checkholes that are on my street, and I get the same answer every time, you know, it's, it's, there's a water table, we can't do anything about it, there is no money. So I just, I need to point that out because as a Renton resident, the, the west side seems to be sort of orphaned because it's connected to the West Hill. The second, the second thing I want to say is that I'm also the manager of Skyway Water and Sewer District, and I applaud your city staff in your water and sewer utility departments. They are absolutely excellent, and we have worked many years together to put in infrastructure together. We share a tank, we share infrastructure, and our staffs work very good together and, and very hard. We also worked, I think it's three years ago now, with the city staff in Olympia, both the Water and Sewer Association, AWC, and we lobbied hard for utility tax option to help close that gap that is there in the funding when you're considering West Hill. And, and I'm happy to say tonight that there's two commissioners of the Water and Sewer District. Commissioner John Alt and Commissioner Don Henry are here to be part of this discussion, and it takes a lot of foresight and courage to, to go into the area of utility tax. Water and Sewer has traditionally come out in Olympia with a strong and loud voice opposing any kind of utility tax. With King County, we, we were out there, but this is a truly unique situation. And, and the Water and Sewer District, even though it's not popular, our boards stepped to the plate to really do what they could, to do what we can, to help narrow that gap, and, and I applaud them also. Finally, it's all about relationship, and again, I understand the fiscal impacts involved. And, but those, I think, can be overcome. The, the relationship that Renton has had with the West Hill has gone on for years. The Renton School District, Renton Avenue, Renton, West Hill shops in Renton, West Hill works in Renton. West Hill is the perfect place to be as far as the, the center of the universe in its proximity to every, everything. Everyone passes through West Hill to get from Renton to Seattle, to Renton to Kent. And that relationship is, is going to be there. So what we would ask you today, tonight, to do is to allow the vote to continue. You, you set it for a date certain on November 6th back in the fall, and I know there's real concerns, I know the economy is bad, but I think that we have been creative in the past, we will be creative in the future, we have a relation, a working relationship. Should the, should the community decide to, to vote yes, and that be a loud yes, then give it time to find, to find other solutions, other options. Maybe it's an additional assessment. I, I don't know what the answer is...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, your, your five minutes is up.
Okay, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I just urge you to carry it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Rice.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Rice, and I live at 1162 Monterey Avenue Northeast in Renton, in the Kennebale area, and I actually work in Skyway, the West Hill. I'm the investment manager for Creston Point. I manage 476 homes. I appreciate your conversation today. In fact, I think I was having the same conversation with my staff today. How do we get our budget where we need it to be? And I'm also the president of the West Hill Business Association. And like many people, I lived in Renton probably now for over 10, 11 years, graduated from Hazen, and always knew about the West Hill, and always didn't, I never went, never ventured, but I've heard all the stories of the good old days with the A&amp;H grocery store, drug store, and everything like that. When I first got the opportunity to work in West Hill, it was about six years ago, I built Creston Point from dirt. I was there from the beginning, I've been through the bad times, I've been through the good times, I got the opportunity to get introduced to the business district. What I found was the rumors that were happening about West Hill were not true. This, the safety issues, this and this, people don't care, the dynamics, and the businesses up there was not true. Given the opportunity to work in West Hill, I've really loved it. I've loved meeting new people, I've loved the dynamic, dynamic of the, the culture up there, and then I got involved with the annexation. What does this really mean? What are we looking at with numbers? And one of the things that I've really liked is being around people and their optimism. Telling us no or delaying a vote, honestly, lack of better terms, is kind of slapping us in the face. Like, well, we'll just keep putting you down, putting you off, putting you off, putting you off. What I really would like you to do is let us, let us vote on the issue. If we say yes, give us the opportunity to work with you to help close those gaps with the budget. You know, like they were saying, 28 acres of parks. Right now, we have a group that volunteers to take care and maintain our parks, and they love doing it. Have you been on the West Hill Connects? They'll tell you about the meetings, when they're gonna meet up, friendships evolved, and we're happy to continue to do it. We'll take the time to get these resources into play where we need it. You know, of course, most importantly, Mr. Peterson, when you're talking about safety, fire, police, and all that, I mean, yes, that's gonna be a concern, but where, did you know that we have block watches? They're intense on Skyway, and it's because people care about their neighborhood. We might have a lot, we might have burglaries, but guess what? We don't have as many as the other places do. We've been able to isolate it, we have great sheriffs, we work with them. There's people on the hill that are willing to work, and not to mention, we spend all our money here in Renton. We really do. I mean, we like coming down here, the Landing is my favorite spot, you will send me there all the time, but a lot of people are down there at Fred Meyer's, Safeway, all of our school districts are, we all go to the Renton School District. We're all putting the money back in the pot. What we want the opportunity to be is actually to say, "I'm a, I'm a Rentonite. I belong to Renton. This is my city." The opportunity to vote, you know, who our council members are, give in our two cents on how to make our community better than what it is. It is a diamond in the rough, and it is something to be looked at. And for those Rentonites who are curious about what West Hill may or may not bring, I invite you to come visit us. You know, we've had amazing car shows, we, we're gonna have a safety fair. We're doing all of this on us, on our volunteers, so the money that we're coming from is from our sweat, and what we're asking is, is just to be a part of something. We're kind of getting tired of being told no. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
You're okay.
Next is Paul Witt.
Paul Witt, City of Renton residents. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight on the subject of the West Hill annexation. As a current City of Renton resident, I'm here to urge you to not move forward with the annexation at this time. I believe I understand the history and the complexities of annexations, both large and small, probably better than most. I understand, as a citizen of Renton, that should this issue go to the ballot, that only the voting, voters who live in the proposed area will get to vote at the ballot box. Therefore, the only vote by current residents of the city, and this is by law and I understand it, lies with you seven council members. Representing over 90,000 citizens in the city, that is your duty, that is your burden. It's placed upon you as a representative form of government to vote in the best interest and on behalf of those you were elected to represent. With a continued weak economy and an uncertain economy, taking on a revenue-negative responsibility the size of the West Hill annexation may only lead to long-term dilution or delay of services and programs to current Renton residents. The degree of dependence on the sales tax sharing dollars to subsidize the annexation is too risky. This funding is finite with a sunset date, and as you are aware, it is also at risk each budget cycle in Olympia. In either case, this will end sooner or later, and as then-council member Dennis Law shared his concerns on this subject in October of 2006, the city may either face significant citywide service cuts or local tax increases. During these austere economic times, the city has worked hard through its employees to meet current service levels and programs. This large annexation creates commitments for the city that may negatively impact those services and programs. I'll give you a brief example of one city program in my own neighborhood that might be adversely affected by a West Hill annexation. In late 2010, our neighborhood heard about a new city program involving our stormwater detention pond. We worked with the city to identify and meet the criteria to participate in the program for the city to take over its maintenance and repair. In November of 2011, the council approved funding to begin the transfer of responsibility from the neighborhood to the city. While there has been some communication between the city and our neighborhood, the most recent contacts have all been us contacting the city to find out the status, it is now mid-June, and the transfer of responsibility still hasn't occurred. Our neighborhood's still waiting for paperwork from the city. It's assumed that this program involves significant staff work, both from the stormwater folks and from the city's legal department. I'm concerned that should something like a West Hill annexation be approved, the immediate demands placed on all city departments could possibly delay or even end promised programs like this. With detention ponds in the annexation area being the immediate responsibility of the city, the already-busy staff would be responsible for that maintenance and repair immediately, potentially, therefore, before they have time or budget to address the current residents under this new program. I appreciate the desire of many West Hill residents to come into our wonderful city. I certainly can see where it's a huge advantage to them. As I believe Councilman Corman mentioned in the East Plateau annexation, I believe his statement was, "I can see what's in it for them, I've struggled to see what's in it for us." What I do not see is that it's in the best interests of current residents at this time. Again, I ask you to consider the needs and interests of the current residents first and not move forward at this time, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have five items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Hearing none. I heard asked the council concur in the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Swicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Earlier tonight in committee of the whole, we discussed the West Hill annexation in light of some new developments. Basically, it's currently set for the ballot for November 6th, which time the West Hill voters would have the opportunity to vote to approve or disapprove an annexation. The resulting, a result of that vote, if it was in the affirmative, would require the city to develop a plan to take in the annexation, as opposed to, early there was some thought that council would then get to decide if they were going to take it in or not, and it's been clarified by a city attorney that it is required that it would come in, and the discussion was, basically, would be a long-term plan and that type of thing. Reason I'm going over this is that status quo says that November 6th is the election date for the West Hill annexation vote. What we discussed in committee of the whole is proposing a committee report that will be read by Madam Clerk. That committee report, the result of that, should that committee report pass, would be postponement of the election, removal from the November 6th date, basically then leaving it open for further discussion by the council and setting a date in the future. Result of that committee report not passing, however, would be the fact that status quo would survive, and it would remain on the ballot, and because it's currently on the ballot, there is no reason for any further council action, so no second vote would be taken. So just wanted council to recognize that should this committee report not pass, the West Hill annexation remains on November 6th, and with that, the committee of the whole has a committee report.
West Hill Annexation Election. I'm reading unsigned version three. The Committee of the Whole deliberated on West Hill Annexation Election timelines and options. With the consideration of the projected city 2013 through 2014 budget challenge, the Committee of the Whole wishes to further delay the annexation election until the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, in the year the council determines that the city's financial condition improves, or other long-term financing tools become available to bridge the annexation funding gap. Therefore, the committee recommends that council adopt a resolution requesting King County to remove the item from the November 2012 election and rescind the prior resolution requesting an election.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the committee report be approved as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the committee of the whole committee report. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we have a roll call vote.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, so I wonder if, if I could ask maybe you, Mr. Mayor, or perhaps the council president, or perhaps somebody from the city staff to explain briefly the, again, the, the distinction, and I think I understand it, between this action and, and the other one, which would be to leave the, if, if we left it on the ballot now, and it went to election, and voters decided in the affirmative... and voters decided in the affirmative, the other option the council was looking at is delaying until such time as we might have the money. But that would be uncertain, too. This, neither of these is, provides a date certain. But in a lot of ways, this one rings more to an appropriate process if you're gonna delay it because it keeps the election closer to the actual action that might be taken. But...
I think the biggest difference is with this action, the annexation tax credit would still survive. And therefore, at a later date, if you were to take a vote, we'd still have the support of the state to help fund, to fund this. If this goes to an election in November and fails, the annexation is over. The annexation opportunity is, for all intents and purposes, over. So that's probably the difference between the two. Once again, in terms of voters approving this in November, we're comfortable administratively that we're gonna take, I mean, we're gonna work on it, but we're not gonna propose to the council to annex the area until we can afford to do it. And I can't tell you when that would be. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Randy, we had a committee report that, basically, was unnecessary. And I'm not positive that might have been the one that you were thinking of that said something on Committee of the Whole deliberate on West Hill. Keeping in mind the projected 2013 budget challenge, Committee of the Whole recommends the full council could still conduct the annexation election. That's basically what a no vote does, is that committee report. So that committee report wasn't necessary because that's status quo. Was there, the, so if they have, if they do, and please correct me, Jay or Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, if they vote to come in, it's still, when we bring them in, how the timeline, all that is still absolutely in play. But it does shift from, we can't say no.
That's right.
We'd still, if it gets phased and all that kind of discussion, we'd still come up. We don't make that decision tonight.
So, if I may, then, yeah. So in summary, this proposed action would keep in place, to the best of our knowledge, the state sales tax.
Yes.
And, but it does, as some members of the public that spoke tonight, the unfortunate aspect is, for those that have been working the campaign, they're gonna, they won't, they won't have certainty of when the election happens. It'll still be a possibility. And at such a time in the future, as the economy brightens, you know, we might be able to fix that date.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they raise a good point. We've discussed it for a long time. Once again, it's, the decision you make tonight will put the city in a position that if the vote is affirmative, then we will need to figure out a way to take it in at some point in time.
If we don't pass this committee report. This committee report delays it, takes it off the ballot.
Any further questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Mr. Zwicker?
No.
Ms. Breyer?
No.
Mr. Prince?
No.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. Four nos, three yes.
Okay, so the Committee of the Whole report fails and the election will continue for November 2012.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I know the street names will stay the same, that we don't change them anymore. They, currently, that whole area, it has a Seattle address.
It'll go to a Renton address.
That will be Renton. And then zip code change? Or they get to keep the zip code and phone numbers?
That, I don't know about. I don't think phone numbers will be a problem. And I don't know about the zip code. Do you know, Mr. Covington?
I am not sure about the zip code. I think that, just thinking about the City of Newcastle and the efforts they've had over the years to try to get their zip code changed, and they've been unsuccessful. So the zip code may remain for those residents that are currently with a Seattle zip code. That could stay the same. We'll double-check on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I can talk to the Newcastle Renton area because I'm also in their zip code. And it remains, remains the same. And I worked for a number of years in Tuckahilla, in the South Center area. And they had the choice of, they used the same zip code, but they could use either Seattle or Tuckahilla, depending on what the business wanted to use. So the zip code stays, though.
Well, we'll figure that out and give you...
Curious.
Okay.
No more unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has a report.
Give me a second, forget you.
Thank you, thank you.
Finance Committee Report: Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on June 18th, 2012, Claim Vouchers 312556 through 312791, I'm sorry, 971, Two Wire Transfers and One Payroll Run With Benefit Withholding Payments Totalling $10,69,079.30. And Payroll Vouchers Include 743 Direct Deposits And 77 Payroll Checks Totalling $1,649,855.90. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have some Transportation Committee reports to present.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report: Addendum to Northwest Seaplanes Incorporated Lease. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the lease rate increase to the Northwest Seaplanes Incorporated Lease and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the lease addendum. This is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the committee report be approved as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that the Transportation Committee report be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report: Operating Permit in Agreement with Clean Craft Detailing Incorporated. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the sublease from Boss Air LLC to Clean Craft Detailing Incorporated and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the operating permit in agreement with Clean Craft Detailing Incorporated. This is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move approval of the committee report as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report: Addendum to Aerodyne LLC Lease. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the lease rate increase and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the lease addendum to Aerodyne LLC's lease. This is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the committee report as presented?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's all the old business.
Aye. Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have one resolution and a couple of ordinances.
The resolution regards the addendum to the Regional Fiber Optics Consortium Agreement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an addendum to the Community Connectivity Consortium's Project Agreement Template Policy between the City of Renton and the cities of Auburn, Bellevue, Kirkland, Seattle, and King County, Renton School District, University of Washington, and Valley Communications.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
May the resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Ordinance for First Reading Regarding Windstone 5 Annexation. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, annexing certain territory to the city, property consisting of approximately 4.3 acres, the northern, eastern, and southern boundaries of which are coterminous with existing city limits. This is the Windstone 5 Annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next ordinance for first reading regards the Windstone 5 Annexation zoning. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the zoning classification of certain property annexed within the city from R4 Urban Residential 4 Dwelling Units per acre, King County zoning to R4 Residential 4 Dwelling Units per acre city zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, ordinance for first reading regards the time limitation for audits code amendment. And ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 5-23-7 of Chapter 23, Examinations, Records Preservation, Successor Liability, and Public Disclosure of Title V Finance and Finance Regulations of City Code by clarifying the intent of the limitation on actions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
May this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to new business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June 25th, beginning at 5:30 PM, the Committee of the Whole will meet in the seventh-floor conferencing center to discuss two items. One being regional committee updates and the other item being emerging issues in education and transportation. And also, just want to take a quick moment to thank staff and administration, public, and council for an informative and flexible discussion tonight in Committee of the Whole. I think that, I think we did well with what we had to move fairly quickly with. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Breyer?
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No new business.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Community Services Committee that would normally be scheduled for next Monday, June 25th, has been canceled. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
No new business, no meetings to announce, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna ask, just a little bit of indulgence to just maybe lay out for the public then exactly where we are with the West Hill annexation. Because it was kinda, it's kinda confusing. But it's going to the ballot.
It goes to the ballot on November 6th, 2012. And we'll see what the people decide on whether they want to become part of Renton or not.
Okay, and this is the one and only chance to get that income ta, or the state sales tax.
Right, if it fails, then we'll lose that.
Okay, so that, people need to be aware of that. So, and then, that's gonna be a big part of bridging the gap, having certainty there.
It's absolutely not doable without it.
Yeah. And then, any other, any other work anybody can do to figure out how to make that viable, would, assuming an affirmative election, would speed up the rate at when it, which, when it could actually be annexed. That date is not fixed yet.
No.
But, but that would be a matter of putting that picture together.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And that's, you know, not to say that we couldn't. Suzanne, could we still, West Hill, let's say it failed. Could they still present another petition? And we could try to see to get, see if we get the state sales tax?
The, I'm not Suzanne, obviously, but the statute allows the commencement of an annexation through the year 2015.
2015. So it could be brought forward again through another petition.
Okay, very good. Okay, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee will be meeting on June 25th at 4:30 in the council conference room. And we will be discussing the release of utility easement at Renton Village, the Yellow Pages Opt-Out Program, and Liberty List Station Bid Award. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just share with you and the other fellow council members that last week, I had an opportunity to attend an anti-domestic violence event called Making Real Change. And the event was hosted by an organization called Queen It's a New Day. This nonprofit organization's focus is to help restore confidence and self-esteem for women who are victims of domestic violence. Here's a few handouts I'd like to pass along. Here's a few handouts I'd like to pass along. Each year, Queen It's a New Day selects 100 women, and they perform a two-day makeover from the inside out at a nice hotel for women who have been abused, broken, or forgotten, to show them their worth. All of the queens receive work clothes and shoes, hairstyles and makeup application, manicures and pedicures, chair massages, professional photos, overnight stay at a luxury hotel, job fair with vendors and schools, and life skills training. The Making Real Change events guest speaker this year was CNN's Heroes Award winner Betty Marconi. Betty learned about female abuse at a very early age. As a child living in Zimbabwe, she witnessed domestic violence in her home, her father beating her mother. At the age of six, Betty was raped, and her mother concealed it. Her father continued beating her mother, and at the age of nine, Betty watched her mother die at the hands of her father. She says that the way her family broke down gave her a reason to stand up. In 1998, Betty stood up and started the Girl Child Network, and in 2007, she expanded it to the Girl Child Network Worldwide. Girl Child Network Worldwide supports and promotes girls' rights, empowerment, and education by reaching out to girls wherever they are economically deprived, at risk of abuse, subject to harmful cultural practices, or living in areas of instability. Betty has a remarkable story that transcends beyond survivor unto victor, and as she would say, quote, "We are victorious and not victims." Needless to say, as you can see with those photos, everyone was very riveted with her speaking. I wish I could share them with the audience. I don't believe that there was a dry eye in the place that night, but it's a worthy cause, and I thought that I would shed a little light on it, being that I do have an interest in domestic violence, as I serve on the Domestic Violence Initiative in King County. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Zwicker, did you want to announce the executive session?
Did we have audience comment, or do?
Yeah, I just, not adjourned to it, but, or not recessed to it, but just to make the announcement.
Sure, yeah, at the end of the meeting, I'll be moving, for us to move into executive session, following the council meeting for 30 minutes to discuss a personnel matter.
Next is audience comment. Come on up. Five minutes, city residents in your name for the record, which we all know.
Is this part of the five-minute clock?
Yes, that's, it's ticking.
My name is Audrey Adams, I'm 10199, South East 83rd Court, Renton, and I'm here again to talk about fluoridation. And, sorry, the lateness of the paperwork that is being handed out now, but I just got the information today, which was due to a very, very fast public information request/response. Your staff is awesome. Mr. Zimmerman and Lys Hornsby and Mr. Covington, all have been fabulous, and I appreciate their responsiveness so, so much. One, and also, by the way, Mr. Mayor, I sincerely appreciate your thoughtfulness about talking about putting a Committee of the Whole meeting to speak about fluoridation. But my job is to help inform, fill in some of the gaps, things that you might not know. I appreciate all of you that took the time to watch this 28-minute video. One of the biggest misperceptions is what water fluoridation is. Water fluoridation is a process, it is, in and of itself, does not describe the chemical, because there's many different chemicals that are involved. The perception is generally that it's safe. Well, it is, if you're looking at the chemical that was originally used to do most of the testing, and that is calcium fluoride. Calcium fluoride is the natural occurring fluoride in some areas, generally not around here, but say, for example, in some areas of India and China, and even Texas. So, when you talk about calcium fluoride, that's a comparatively benign substance, not completely benign, but that's not the kind of fluoride that we're adding to Renton's water. And so I want you to understand the differences between the two. Sodium fluoride, and I, of course, requested the invoice, and thank you very much, the invoice, that Renton pays for the sodium fluoride that goes into the water, so I know for a fact that it is sodium fluoride. Sodium fluoride is a synthetic product, it never occurs naturally, and the toxicity level isn't light-years different than calcium fluoride, and that's real important to understand. For example, on the chemical hazard label that you always see on all chemicals, where, you know, has the little diamond, the blue portion of that chemical hazard label refers to the health risks or toxicity. Calcium fluoride is zero, and sodium fluoride is three, that's the highest level of toxicity. And one of the things that makes calcium fluoride so much more safe is, is the calcium itself basically makes it pass through your body very quickly. Sodium fluoride, on the other hand, is not what's regulated by the EPA, and I'm going to talk in future weeks about the, who's got the authority and et cetera, and who's running, who's in charge. But one thing I wanted to note is, I want to talk specifically about the documents that I received very rapidly from your staff on, under a public information request. The invoice that I received showed 10,000 pounds of sodium fluoride purchased for $7,600. 10,000 pounds, that's a lot. But to give you an idea of what the difference of toxicity level is, I kind of did a breakout, I had to use the help of PhD in chemistry, and to figure out what's the lethal dose, for example, that's very relevant, to try to figure out, and for me, I need things broken down. So, for example, looking at a 50-pound bag, that's 22,700 grams of sodium fluoride, and to calculate the lethal dose, which is considered by Merck Manual, 125 milligrams per kilograms of body weight, that would be 2,600 in a 50-pound bag, and there was 250-pound bags in the last shipment, that would be 2,600 lethal adult doses, okay, just for that 150-pound bag. And 22,000, up to 22,000, depending on very, very small child, lethal doses in that 50-pound bag for a child. Now, it would be the equivalent, that 50-pound bag, the toxicity of that 50-pound bag, of sodium fluoride is the equivalent of a ton of calcium fluoride, so there's huge light-years of difference. So every time somebody's talking about, you know, if water fluoridation is safe, you need to know whether or not they're talking about calcium fluoride or sodium fluoride, because there's light-years difference. Keep in mind that almost all of the studies done on, that say that it's safe, has been on calcium fluoride, not sodium fluoride that's currently in use here.
I'm sorry, I got interrupted, your five minutes is up.
All right, I will write to you the rest of what I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's a wish to the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move the council meeting recessed into executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss personnel matters, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn to executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Is still recyclable. That's when I made the decision to put a recycling bin in the home office.